Okay, can everybody hear me? Okay, good evening again. Thank you all for joining us. It is now my honor to introduce the four candidates running in the November general election in the nonpartisan race for Ypsilanti Community Schools Board of Education. We have Dawn Espy, Celeste Hawkins, Ali Suffaty, I'm sorry, Ali, okay, I'm sorry about that, Ali, and Talisha Sutton Kennedy. Okay, thank you all for joining us. As a reminder, that each candidate has 90 seconds for your opening statement, 90 seconds for your closing statement, and two minutes to respond to each question, both from me and from the audience. Candidates are to focus on the issue. Personal attacks are not permitted. Following the questions for myself, which will last approximately 30 minutes, we will begin questions from the audience, which will follow in the same format as the council. Candidates, you will begin speaking in alphabetical order by last name. All candidates have an opportunity to be the first or last to answer the question. Are there any questions for me? All right, and I just want to say your name one more time.
It's Ali, it's A-L-I.
Okay, A-L-I.
But it's spelled A-L-L-I.
Got it, Ali, so like the boxer, right? All right, got it. All right, so we're now ready for your opening statements, and we will start with Dawn.
Hello, hi, thank you, Taryn, and thank you for being our moderator and for your work with the district. I appreciate that you're here. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Ypsilanti District Library, as well as the Ypsilanti Senior Center. I'm grateful that we have this space and opportunity to be here. I am an Ypsilanti resident. My name is Dawn Espy. I've lived here for nearly 10 years. I have a master's in psychology from the University of Michigan. And I've been working with youth and working with nonprofits and education pretty much the whole time I've been in this community. So I've spent time working for nonprofits along with the WISD. And I also work as a consultant currently to support DEI measures, as well as board plan, board development, and strategic planning. I have a great deal of experience. My passion for young people has been the through line for all of my work. My goal is to make sure that young people have the ability to attend school and be successful in school, regardless of their identities or their circumstances. And that's something I've continued to advocate for and work around throughout my years in this community.
Thank you. And now, Celeste, may we have your opening statement?
Yes, good evening, everyone. I would like to also begin by thanking the Ypsilanti District Library and the League of Women Voters, and to you, Taryn, for moderating this evening. And I want to really thank all those in the audience who joined us this evening to listen to what we have to say about why we want to serve on the school board for Ypsilanti Community Schools. I'm a wife and a proud mother of three children who all attended Ypsilanti Community Schools. They started off in kindergarten at Perry. They went on to Estabrook. And then they went through Wyman and Wy High, the International Baccalaureate Schools. All of my young people are now college students, so I'm very happy that I am an empty nester-ish, I guess I could say. And I have served on the board for Ypsilanti Community Schools since 2012. I was appointed as part of the merger when Ypsilanti Public and Willow Run Community Schools merged. I am passionate about educational excellence, educational equity, supporting students who are on the margins, making sure that I represent the voices of all segments of our community, and ensuring that our students get the very best that they deserve and need in our educational system.
Thank you. Ali, may we have your opening statement, please?
Yes, I'd like to thank everybody who's been involved in putting this on. I appreciate this opportunity. My name is Ali Suffaty. I'm a resident of YPSY Township. I've been there now for almost eight years. Actually, I returned to YPSY prior to, when I was here as a student at EMU. And over the last 40 years, I've been an educator, 39 years as a certified teacher and administrator. I'll try to calm myself down here. Since my retirement, I've worked, and that was 2016, I've worked in five elementaries as an interim administrator, two middle schools, and two alternative schools. So I literally have K through 12 experience. I'm a gun sense candidate. I recently addressed the YCS School Board regarding the adoption of a district gun safety resolution, and they did so proudly. And so I'm excited to be able to use my experience in being able to be part of a really good school board that I believe has a clear future.
Thank you. And finally, may we have your opening statement, Talisha?
Thank you to the League of Women Voters and Ypsilanti District Library for hosting this event. My name is Talisha Sutton Kennedy. My family moved to Ypsilanti in 2018 after living in Ann Arbor since 2014. I'm a mother of two daughters, age 17 and 6. My oldest daughter is finishing up her senior year at Huron High School, and my youngest daughter attends YCS. I have two bachelor's degrees, biochemistry and molecular biology, as well as pharmaceutical chemistry. So as a scientist, by training, I began my career in research before identifying my passion for education, and I started to shift my career. I transitioned to work for an educational nonprofit in 2018 and followed that by pursuing a second master's degree in curriculum and instruction. I've also been a contractor, providing after-school tutoring and programming in both Ypsilanti and Ann Arbor. I'm running for a seat because I'm passionate about improving equity in education for all of our students, improving, thank you, the quality of education for all of our students, as well as the investment that we're making in our students and our future. And so I started that by getting involved in my children's school, being an active parent, volunteering at the schools. And I think that getting started with supporting the board and supporting our students here in this community that I love is a great place to begin that work.
Thank you. All right, we're going to start with the first question. As a reminder, I will read the question once, and it will be, it will not be repeated unless requested. We will start with Celeste for the first question. This is under the topic of knowledge of position. What are the primary roles and responsibilities of trustee position? And which do you consider to be the highest priority?
And I just want to apologize. I didn't tell anyone what my educational background was. I hold a bachelor's degree in psychology and master's degree in social work, and my doctorate is in education. In terms of school board service and what that role entails, really, the board is responsible for setting the educational vision for the district. In addition to that, we are responsible for hiring and evaluating the superintendent. We set and adopt policy. We need to make sure, as board members, we not only hold ourselves accountable, but we hold district administrators accountable for ensuring that the goals and the strategic vision that we have set for the district is being carried out with fidelity. We are also responsible for cultivating a positive, productive, and inclusive, diverse, equitable environment for all of our students in our schools. And we also have to make sure that in order to say we want educational equity and excellence, that means that we have to ensure we have high expectations and high support for our students, our staff, our educators in the district. And we have to make sure we hold ourselves and everyone in our district accountable to those outcomes. And lastly, I would say that being on the board really means that you're serving as someone who sits in a seat, who is representing the voice of the community, who elected you to serve in that role, and that you're also being a voice to represent the needs of the district. That includes the students, the staff, the families, caregivers, and our educators and administrators in our district.
Thank you. Ali?
Dr. Hawkins did a wonderful job in terms of what the responsibilities are to be a board member. There's some things that I just want to add in terms of, and I know that this exists on this board, is to be an incredible team member and that know that your voice does count and that the things that you say contribute to the greater good. I believe in the systems theory, and so ultimately, teaching and learning is the goal of education. And so our job is to make sure that we create that to be a situation where teachers are able to do their best jobs with the students. And therefore, having our students move through the district, ultimately graduating and becoming contributing people to society.
All right, thank you. Talisha, you're next.
Thank you. So as a YCS board member, my role will be to provide oversight and governance to ensure that the district meets its goals and serves our community effectively. Key responsibilities include recruiting, hiring, and evaluating our superintendent, adopting policies that reflect our community's needs, and making sound financial decisions to allocate resources in ways that best support student achievement. So we're responsible for approving curricula and texts and aligning that with the district's goals, while monitoring their effectiveness through student outcomes. Another responsibility for us on the board would be advocating for public education and fostering strong relationships across our community, as well as with our lawmakers, so that we can advocate for the things that our community has asked us for, and ensuring that the voices of the community are heard and reflected in those decisions that we're making. I would add that the highest priority, which I believe you asked as a part of the question, is bringing in more funding to our district, as well as improving our student achievement levels and proficiency.
Thank you. Dawn?
Hi. What I see as the role of a school board trustee is not only hiring and evaluating the superintendent, but also working with them, being a partner with them in our work, supporting them throughout the school year, as well as being a check, right? Being somebody who can check in and evaluate and hold people accountable. We have fiduciary responsibilities. And we also act as a representative of the community. So I think we work with the superintendent and for students and families. Ultimately, when we're in these roles, we have the responsibility to look at and adopt policies. We are also charged with spreading information about the district and being a cheerleader for it. We can use our platform and opportunities we have to continue to highlight the strengths of the district. And so I look forward to that opportunity to continue to be a champion for the YCS school district.
Thank you. All right, we're going to jump into a tough topic already. Student safety and communications with parents. What specific steps should be taken to improve school safety in the YCS district? How can communication with parents be improved, especially in emergency situations? Ali, you are first.
Well, I think that the most important thing is transparent communication is for, knowledge is power. And now, we have to balance that within when we deliver that, when we deliver that communication. I have found that at times, at the high school level, we've had situations where students were able to use their cell phones to contact their parents. Well, therefore, then we have established a real unstable setting at the school that mostly parents want the safety of their children, but also they tend to get in the way with what law enforcement is trying to do in terms of those situations and what the school district's protocol has. But I think that the most important thing is really communicating, letting them know what the plans are or what the direction is. Another situation is student safety. And I'm a gun safety advocate. I've worked with Moms Demand Action for about eight years now as well. And I believe that gun safety is ultimately very important in our schools. It's sort of a, you know, a thing that I really believe strongly is that at times when we do some lockdown things and we talk about it in such a way that we actually foster trauma among our students, and that trauma is definitely somewhere that it is a deterrent to learning. And so a student doesn't go to school being comfortable. Like, when I went to school, I know that was a long time ago, but that was my place of comfort. That was my place of support. And that's what we have to build to again.
Thank you. Talisha?
I'm sorry, can I ask you to repeat the question? There was a lot in there.
Sure. The topic is student safety and communication with parents. What specific steps should be taken to improve school safety in the YCS district? How can communication with parents be improved, especially in emergency situations?
Thank you. In regards to school safety, I don't have any immediate answers to that. I would need to do some research, have some conversations with the folks who have been on the board and with the experts in our community, and learn more about that before I could share some ideas on that. In regards to communication, as a parent, the communication that I received the other day following the actor shooter incident created more concern than it did provide me with, you know, a feeling of knowing that my student was secure and safe. And so I was happy to receive information about what was going on. And so I think it would be really helpful for us to ensure that anyone who is sending out those sorts of communications and keeping our parents involved has the training and how the information should be shared in order to make sure that our parents know what's going on, that we're being open, honest, and transparent with what's going on at our schools and around our schools, but also that we are giving enough sufficient information to not cause more panic and concern. And so those are the things that I would look into and advocate for regarding school communication.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you. And I appreciate Talisha naming that recently there has been incidences within the YCS community where there were some concerns raised around safety in the schools, as well as communications, this past week. I think one of the things that's really critical in this situation is to maintain a calm and direct approach. Not only are we interested in learning things about how to prepare for a lockdown, which I think the, you know, our police force and our sheriff's department do ALICE trainings. We also need to have training around how to address the emotional response. People, I know for a fact, were frightened and scared and felt like the only direction they had was to take cover. Young people are upset and need space to process, as well as parents. So I think when you're dealing with a crisis situation or something where there's safety concerns, we need to be addressing physical safety, as well as emotional safety, and bringing in some, or bringing in calming techniques, any sort of additional training that's going to actually support how you talk to students about this, not just what you do in the situation. I also believe that, you know, in these types of situations, it's really important that there is clear, again, ample communication, using multiple different methods of communication, whether it's text message, email, phone calls. And I would like to see that this messaging, we're getting this not only from the superintendent, we're getting it from the principals, we're getting it from the teachers in the classroom. And I would like to also talk about the idea of potentially creating some space for a live question feed, right? So someone who could address questions and concerns that are coming up for families in those moments. Because they may say, well, is this going on for my student? Is this going on at my school? And they need to be able to ask those questions.
Thank you. Celeste?
So just a few points that I'll make regarding ensuring school safety is kind of paramount and the top priority. One, I think that you need to make sure that we, we need to always make sure we have timely, consistent, and transparent communication with our stakeholders. Those stakeholders are our children, those are our parents, those are our teachers. We need to make sure we're communicating consistently. We need to make sure we create and cultivate a culture of trust and respect so that if there is a safety issue in our buildings, we understand that protocols and processes are followed so that we are assuming positive intentions about what the district's roles are and what the police role is. You know, I appreciate that this is being brought up because just Friday, we know that there was an incident in two segments of our community. And the response to that from the police department, from what I'm aware of, was quick and swift. I would also say that it was traumatic, right? Because students were impacted. We hear too often about school shootings and safety issues across the country. But I do trust that when we have law enforcement who are responsible for responding, and I understand that process, and that process means that if they're coming into your building, they have taken over the building. And that that building is no longer in the hands of the school district until they do an all-clear, an all-safe, and then that power and control is relinquished back over to the district. But we need to make sure that the messages that we send out to our parents, to our community members, that is consistent and it is grounded in facts, and we don't respond too quickly to reactions from the community because we want to make sure that we get information out in any instance that is accurate, that is timely, and that is clear so it doesn't create or breed confusion or division. And I just want to note and just center that our students in the district were all safe, following both of these incidents.
Thank you. All right, moving on to academic performance. Michigan ranks below the national average in reading and math. And to Bridge, in Bridge Magazine, YCS students in grades three through seven scored below the state average in both these areas. Give a concrete example of programs or services that you will help implement if elected. Dawn?
Thank you. Yes, so thinking about the academic performance, this is something that has been a concern and a challenge for years. And when you start looking at the district, one of the things that is certainly concerning is the number of educators that are staying within the district. Students need to have relationships with each other and with their educators to feel like they can trust them. There are a lot of young people in our community who are going through many things outside of the school. And so being able to support them as their whole selves and not focus solely on their educational achievement, but actually being aware of their larger needs. When those needs can be met, then there's a space to focus on their education and focus on their academic performance. Right now, we have students who have difficulty getting to school. They have problems going on at home, and they are not, and they may become school hungry. And so what we need to do is make sure that there is a comprehensive, like, full self kind of support that's being provided in this district. I think that continuing to engage with after-school programs, such as the EMU, Bright Futures, and things like that, is going to be an opportunity for us to see that increase in achievement, having the opportunity to build that competency with parents and families as well, with the recognition that there are families who don't have that capacity, right? And so what does it look like to provide that additional support, provide assistance, provide a hotline, provide opportunities for students to continue to get homework help or continue to work on their schooling outside of the building, too?
Thank you. Celeste?
So specifically, I guess, as it relates to academic achievement, what I would say to that question would be that we have to make sure that our educational options and choices are really grounded in equity, meaning that we need to make sure every student gets what they need in order to be successful. We have to make curriculum choices, examine curriculum, and see what it's grounded in. And we have to collaborate and make sure our teachers are co-creators of any curriculum that we implement in our district because they are the ones who are going to ultimately be delivering the instruction. So I think we need to make sure that we are collaborating with them and that we are examining our curriculum choices and assessing if what's working and what's not working so that we might need, if we need to pivot to make changes, we can do so. And we need to make all those decisions that are grounded in good data. We know that there continues to be an achievement gap between minority and non-minority students. We know often, along the lines of race and class, that you see numbers that are drastically different between these groups. So we need to be very intentional, thoughtful, and strategic about what program options we create and access points that we create for our students. We need to have an engaging, rigorous curriculum for all of our students, and that should be non-negotiable. And we have to make sure we have high expectations for our students, but we have to couple that with high support. It doesn't matter if you have high expectations if you don't give your educational leaders and your educators in the districts the resources to support the curriculum that you've chosen. And in addition to that, we have to make sure that we support our teachers by making sure we attract and retain excellence in our district, and we support them to deliver high-quality instruction.
Thank you. Ali?
That is really the crux of it all, in terms of how we teach our students. Now, COVID caused a moment in time where our students were sort of deprived of instruction. And we tried to attempt to correct that by teaching all subject matters. And that became a very difficult thing to do, where we should have been focusing on reading, writing, and math. Those were the easiest ones. Now we see the deficiencies in those. Now, one thing I will say about the school board in YPSY, in the time that I've been watching over, I've noticed that there have been two programs that have been put in. One is reading, and the other one is math. The one that comes to mind strongest is this program called Reveal Math, I believe it is. And when they presented it, it was based upon research and data. And that is the biggest thing that I think that it has to be. Another thing is that they're giving it time. It's not going to be, you know, one year, we're going to work on Reveal Math, and then next year, we're going to see the next shiny object that comes about. They are committed to looking at how the improvement there comes, training their staff, and also taking that data to see if it's really working. And the willingness to spend a little extra money to be able to tweak it when they see that there's a need. And finally, ultimately, I think that we have to assure that each student can learn by assessing individual students at where they are and with that, what they need to be successful, and you've got to have interventions in place to their specific needs. Though, we are teaching, as was pointed out all, also teaching the whole child, and that's the social-emotional aspect.
Thank you. Talisha?
Thank you. So improving academic achievement is definitely a top priority in our district. And several evidence-based practices that I believe Dr. Hawkins and Dawn mentioned can also be really helpful in this. So some policies or curricula that I would support as a part of the board are early interventions and literacy and numeracy, and expanding our evidence-based reading and math programs to build a strong foundation for our students. Integrating social-emotional learning into our curricula and our teaching is really crucial, as improving social-emotional learning skills can enhance academic achievement and engagement. And collaborating with our teachers to learn more about their ideas and collaborating with our educational experts to identify ways that we can meet students where they are and provide those targeted supports so that we can get them to where they need to be in order to build on that learning. We can bring in new curricula and try to continue teaching students at the grade levels that they're supposed to be. But if they don't have the skills to understand what they're meant to be learning at that point in time, then that's not going to do them a service. So we need to really continue the expanded, continue the district partnerships to provide tutoring and support services, and even providing more support at school so that we can bring those students to the place where they need to be and then continue building on that learning. So, yeah.
Thank you. The next topic is COVID funds ending. Temporary COVID relief funds runs out at the end of 2024. What strategies do you propose for continuing to support students who suffered learning loss during the COVID pandemic? And we will start with you, Talisha.
Some strategies that we can use, continuing what I just mentioned, targeted supports. So targeting, targeted academic interventions, like personal like personalized personalized learning plans, tutoring, and extended learning opportunities such as summer school and after-school sessions to address some of the specific gaps that we've identified with our students. And then also bringing in that social-emotional aspect, providing more opportunities for our students to heal from the effects of COVID-19 mentally and emotionally. And so I think mixing our academic supports as well as our emotional supports will be important to supporting our students following COVID-19.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you. Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Temporary COVID relief funds run out at the end of 2024. What strategies do you propose for continuing to support students who suffered learning loss during the COVID pandemic?
So with the recognition that that additional funding is being depleted, and that's something that businesses, organizations, agencies, education is facing all across the state and the country. We see that, yes, there has been a learning loss during COVID. However, we are seeing people continue to come back from that. I think there's an opportunity to continue the programs that have already been implemented to support that, along with the ability to offer things like summer school, like a continued education program throughout the year that doesn't just allow for students to come in and focus, say, in the classroom, but also integrates their physical activity, their like emotional activity. And so being able to offer programming through breaks and holidays if necessary. I think that, obviously, not all students are going to want to attend those, but I think that there's an opportunity, especially it also provides additional childcare. It also provides additional support to families if you have opportunities to be in the school building and work with educators throughout the year. I think that that's going to be a great, that's a really great opportunity to think about how we continue to build people's abilities and continue to kind of close those gaps that have occurred.
Thank you. Celeste?
With the funding ending, I mean, I think the district has to really stay focused on how those multi-tiered systems of support and targeted interventions continue to support our young people in schools. I think some of those interventions could look like after-school programs, mentoring for students. I also think we have to to be clear about the mental health funding that has been cut, and the mental health funding impacts the social-emotional needs of our students in our schools. And so we need to advocate at the state level to make sure those funding levels are restored, because students cannot learn if we're not supporting the whole child. And that's just not academics, right? It's the social and the emotional pieces. I think we need to leverage resources and support through the state, through grants and funding. And I think we also need to make sure we expand and grow our partnerships within the community that helps support our students through after-school programs, before before-school programs, and even programs that come into the school buildings to help students throughout the school day. And lastly, I would say that to make sure that we understand clearly in our district where we need to target those supports and make sure we have the funding and we do it with fidelity and we do it by being good stewards of the district's resources, by not overspending, but really being clear and equitable about how that money is being spent and used to support our students so that they can achieve the academic, social, and emotional outcomes that are aligned with our strategic priorities and our plan in the district.
Thank you. Ali?
Well, first of all, I think that this is also a question that the state of Michigan and maybe the Department of Education has to look at as well, because they they gave us this money, we use this money in a positive way, and now it's not going to be there, but that's going to be a void for our students. I'm going to go back to assuring that each student can learn by assessing individual students have what they need to be successful. And this is within interventions. There's a lot of different ways to do it, many of them were spoken to as well. One thing that I believe in, that there has to be, with some students, there has to be a sort of a push-in type of situation, where the intervention comes in the classroom to help that student with a specific subject matter and possibly a pull-out, where that that student can get more individual focus. They have to create the conditions for our teachers to do their best work. It comes down to teaching and learning. And I know that, that, that I I've witnessed in terms of what, what the, what YCS has done with the summer camps. I believe they call them grizzly camps, where students were able to get some help in different ways. So those things are in place. They just have to be reinforced and fostered and continued.
Thank you. Our next question is in regards to staffing. What can YCS do to attract and retain highly qualified staff? And we will start with Celeste.
I think to attract and retain high-quality staff, you first have to make sure that the culture and climate within your current school district is really one that supports the teachers and the educators and the administrators who are there. So we need to do a good job of making sure we do program satisf, I mean, satisfaction surveys that are not just when when our employees leave, but also wanting to get the pulse on why our educators continue to stay with our district, what their needs are, and what things we can do differently to support them. Because our best recruitment strategy is is the people who work for our district and the families and the parents that are in our district and the students that are in our district. So I think as long as we are doing a good job of retaining and attracting and and keeping good teachers and educators in our classrooms, they are our best recruitment strategy in terms of sharing why it's important and why they want to work for YCS. I also think that we need to be be very, very thoughtful and intentional about how we can continue to pay teachers more. We we know that through the debt relief, we were able to do some of that. But we need to continue to figure out ways that we offer a competitive wage for our teachers, because they deserve to be paid what they are worth. So that is another way that we attract and retain good teachers and really making sure we rely on our partners and we we engage in recruitment fairs, which we do consistently and routinely, to make sure that we attract and retain excellent teachers who are grounded in wanting the best for students and wanting the best for education in a system that supports young people in achieving their highest educational outcomes and attaining what they want to become later in life.
Thank you. Ali?
I I think that in terms of my experience, I've seen really good educators leave the district that I worked in for more money and more compensation. And and bottom line, that's very important. Another thing that I think is very important is that for that educator, I'm sorry, let me turn that around, that teacher to become an educator. So therefore, that there has to be the importance of professional development, that you allow a teacher to not only get the intrinsic value of being an educator, but the intrinsic value of being an educator, that they know that they come equipped with the best skills that they have. They feel better about themselves. And I think ultimately, that's what we all talk about, right? We all talk about is that if if you love your job, you never work a day in your life. That is something that is very easy to accomplish in education, because the ultimate goal is what we do for our students. And really, from the standpoint of my understanding, what I've done with students, I've sort of felt like I'm a little bit immortal, that I will live through them. And ultimately, I think that's what every teacher has to, and every education educator has to learn.
Thank you. Talisha?
I think the first thing that we can do is talk to our faculty, current faculty and staff. I'm not sure if the district has or how frequently they survey current faculty and staff and find out what things we're doing well, that we can do more of, and what things that we're not doing so well, that we can improve on. But that's a great way to learn more about what what areas would we can improve to attract and retain highly qualified faculty and staff. The next will be fostering a culture of respect, inclusion, and collaboration among our educators, so that they feel valued and and also showing that we value the work that they're doing. And then we get down to the bottom line, where we can, where we need to improve funding in our district, so that way we can provide competitive compensation and improve pay for teachers. By offering better compensation packages, professional development opportunities can also go a long way, as well as mentorship and clear career pathways for advancement and fostering growth and job satisfaction.
Thank you. Dawn?
Thank you. As others have said, I think being able to offer a competitive salary, look at things like benefits, vacation days, things like that, especially when the, if the funding isn't there, what are the additional pieces of those packages, right? There is an opportunity to think not just about how much you're getting paid, but how much goes into your quality of your experience and your quality of life. I think additionally, I think there needs to be continued kind of incentives for retention. What I know is that oftentimes, staff of color are oftentimes hired, but leave very quickly after. Being able to retain that staff, being able to create this culture of belonging within the district is something that is incredibly important. Having the teachers feel like they have a community that they are working with, that they are not alone on an island, that they are partners with their administration, partners with their board, partners with the parents and families that they are working with. That is how we build this out. I think when you think about this growth track, right? Thinking about the paraprofessionals that are coming in. What are the opportunities that we are investing in them to potentially become full teachers? Where are they bringing those opportunities forward? And again, Talisha talked about it, but having those mentoring opportunities, having those opportunities to connect with other educators, and also providing professional development, engaging them with all sorts of different trainings, and giving people the opportunity to build out some of their own curriculum, potentially, that is supplementary to what needs to happen in the classroom every day.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the topic of fiscal expertise. The YCS district has a multimillion-dollar annual operating budget. What experience or expertise prepares you to oversee expenditures of this magnitude? And we will start with Ali.
Admittedly, this is something that is within my learning curve. I I do know something about the aspect of being able to take funds and disperse that among a staff, among, well, I was a phys ed, phys ed facilitator. So tools within that, I had to be able to do that. But that is something I have to admit that I have to learn more about. But of course, I believe that I'm a lifelong learner and I'm willing to learn.
Thank you. Next is Talisha.
So I I mentioned that I started working in the nonprofit industry in 2018. And in that transition, I became the operations and finance person for the startup nonprofit managing a multimillion-dollar budget. I was the person that created the budget. I was the person that did the accounting. And I was the person who created all of our forecasts and sort of maintained that financial oversight for that organization. And so, and I was also the person who created our budget and financial policies that we would use in our workflows to maintain those financial practices. So that is some experience that I bring with me. And I understand that every organization's budget is different. And so there will still be much for me to learn in being a board member about how the district manages its budget, what the budget categories are and what they include. And so I look forward to the opportunity to learning and bringing those skills to the district.
Thank you. Dawn?
I have, actually, in my current work as a professional, I provide training to boards to educate them on how to read a budget sheet and understand their fiscal responsibility. So that's something I'm doing every day in my workplace and as part of my my job. Basically, understanding as a board member our fiduciary responsibilities and what that looks like. I have done work as as a board member in other spaces about thinking about fundraising. I have looked at budgets. I've built up budgets for programs I have been the manager or director of. And so currently, I'm working again at a place where not only am I helping other organizations build their budgets, but actually, within our organization, we have a co-creation of our budget, where every staff member is deeply engaged with the process. And so this is something that is part of my everyday life. This is something that is critical to understanding what it looks like to serve a district and prepare our student, or prepare our our community. I know that in IPSY, one of the ways that we oftentimes are in a deficit or have difficulty is around our transportation budget. That is another space that I have spent a great deal of time working in. I previously used to coordinate and arrange transportation for students experiencing homelessness. And so this is something that I am aware of the costs around, and I have ideas about how to support those costs. So I think that there are a lot of different ways that as with our budget that I can contribute to support what we need in the district.
Thank you. Celeste?
Thank you. So a couple of things I'll just note. Having in my professional role, I'm a professor at Eastern Michigan University. I'm currently serving in a role where I'm the director of our undergraduate social work program, and I'm responsible for overseeing our budget for our programs that we administer in our school. Prior to to joining the board, I had no experience with budgets in a in a grand scale. And budget, and school budgets are nuanced. So even in my roles as director at nonprofit organizations, even in my role as professor at a university, school budgets are very nuanced and very complicated. And so a lot of my learning has been by experience, being on the board, serving on the board, really understanding line items and budgets. Really, and I serve on the committee for budget and finance, and really wanting to make sure that that oversight responsibility is taken seriously, because districts can get into trouble very quickly if you're not monitoring closely the budget, where money is going. Our biggest stream of revenue is per pupil funding, and our biggest biggest expense is personnel, right? So the more we attract, retain, and grow our student population, that means that we have more money to be able to support the work of the district. But those line items for our personnel is our biggest, biggest stream of, that's our biggest stream of what goes out of our budget. So I think really understanding that the budget at school districts is probably a little bit more nuanced than in other areas and being accountable and being good stewards of the district's resources in terms of what that really means, in terms of your oversight role. And I would lastly just say, having someone who you hire in the district who is really skilled at making sure that they understand how to manage, how to push forward, and how to be accountable to our district finances, because our audits can get triggered quickly if there are, there's not good oversight and good administration to make sure our budgets are are carried out with fidelity.
Thank you. All right, we're going to have two more questions before we go into closing. I was about to say closing arguments, but closing statements. What can be done for students who are chronically absent from school? This is an audience participation question, and we will start with Dawn.
Thank you. Previously, in my role, I actually worked with the School Justice Partnership to build out a truancy protocol that was used in, I believe, in Ann Arbor schools and also being piloted in across the district or across the county with students who, again, as I mentioned, trying to support students with transportation is one of the major ways that we can address that. A lot of students don't get to school because they don't have access to school. Many students, I believe, when I was working with the district, there were nearly 1,000 students experiencing some sort of housing instability across the district, living in spaces, cohabitating in spaces, living in Detroit, living in outside the county, and trying to figure out how they could best support their trying to figure out how they could best support their education. I think that there are opportunities too, as we learned in COVID, to think about what kind of remote learning opportunities there might be when students can't access the district right away. Continuing to offer opportunities and incentives for our transportation so that we can see this work in an effective way, I think that is critical to students coming to school. I also think students need to want to come to school. And so it needs to be exciting, it needs to be stimulating, it needs to be fun. And again, when we come back to the social emotional learning, it's about building out those relationships, having them excited. I know I'm a parent, and I have children who get excited about their teachers. Then, in that case, they don't want to be, they don't want to miss school, they want to be there. And so I think it's working with the community, because I know, again, when it comes to research, research can be great, I am a big fan of it, I was in a PhD program, and what works in some places may not work in Ypsilanti. And so bringing in the community, talking to parents, talking to guardians to find out what they need in order to help get their kids to school.
Thank you, Celeste.
So I will just piggyback on that and say, we need to understand why students aren't in school, and that can't be sitting in buildings, right? We have to be out in the community in homes, we have to go to homes to understand the why, so that we can better understand what supports we need to put in place to help remove any barriers that are preventing students from getting to school. We currently have a program in our district that does just that, and they work in tandem with our school social workers, with our teachers, and with our administrators in the building to address a lot of our attendance and intruancy issues within the school district. But this is a complicated issue and problem, there is no one size fits all, and there's no magic bullet to figure out the why and what we need to do. There are a multitude of barriers in our community that even extend beyond what the school can do, so we can better support not only our students in getting to school, but we have to support families, and we have to understand the needs of families, because if they can't be their best selves, they're going to struggle with trying to support their students in getting to school. So I think we need to understand this from a holistic perspective, understanding what parents need, understanding what families need, and understanding what our role can be in supporting and mitigating these barriers to getting students to school and staying in school, and really just meeting students where they are. You know, if a student makes it to school late, they're there, right? So we just have to meet students and families where they are, and I don't think a punitive approach to that is supportive or healthy in making sure that our students get what they need so that they can come to school and stay in school.
Thank you. Ali?
Again, this is a complicated issue, and I know that I'm going to kind of put the blame on COVID again. When schools first closed, I know that teachers, educators, school districts, we were heroes. We were looked at something that parents said, you know what, I can't do this job, they must be doing a great job because I'm trying to do it at my home and it's not getting done. And so then, parents started, you know, time went on, time went on, more frustrating for them, understandable, they're probably trying to keep a career and try to educate their children, and then they started being, you know, basically putting the target on education's back. And so when I was, when I returned in post-retirement, there were situations where, first of all, it was during the COVID transition back into buildings, and there were situations where that students didn't know how to behave with each other, they lost that social aspect of it. Plus, they would basically reiterate some of the comments that their parents had made regarding schools and education during that time. That became very difficult for us. And as was pointed out a number of times on this panel, that social emotional focus has to be there. We tend to focus on the academics so much that we forget about that part. In fact, in some districts, even one that I'm familiar with that I worked in, it was a matter of checking a box. Yeah, we do social emotional things, we do it about a half hour every Wednesday. That now has to be done, it has to be taken care of, has to be dealt with, sometimes on the spot. And so we have to make sure that our students have the understanding, and again, as was pointed out, that they want to come to school, that school is somewhere to be fun, and that ultimately, their needs and their care is going to be taken care of.
Thank you. Talisha?
Chronic absence is a really important issue, especially as it relates to us being able to provide students with the service that we are here to provide for them, the support, the education, and given, and supporting them and building the skills that they need to achieve their goals. And so some of the things that I have written down here have already been said, but I'll just reiterate them. First and foremost, communicating and engaging with parents to identify what challenges there are with those students making it to school, having conversations with the students, having conversations with their family members, and identifying what those challenges are so that we can find possible solutions to help them in coming to school. I'm happy to hear that our district already has a program that is working on that and doing some work in that area, and so it would be good to see if we have looked at and evaluated the efficiency of that program and how it's working, how have absences improved since that program has been started, and what other things can we do to improve that program?
Thank you. All right, our final question, knowledge of the school district, what makes YCS unique and what is your passion behind running for school board? We'll start with you, Talisha.
Thank you. I'm new to the district, and so my daughter is in first grade, and so I'm not sure yet what makes it unique. But what I do love about this district is that I've had some wonderful experiences with the school as well as with the community. Being, living in Ann Arbor before coming here, of course, I heard not good things about the district, and about the town and the community, but after living here for the last five years, I know that many of those things that I've heard isn't true. And so one of the things that I'm passionate about in addition to education is about supporting communities, supporting students, ensuring high quality education for all students. And so essentially, that's why I'm looking, seeking to be a board member, is because I think it's important that we really get the message out about what Ypsilanti, and especially Ypsilanti Community Schools, has to offer to all students.
Thank you. Next, Dawn.
So as someone who has worked in the, in the county, in the city, I am fairly familiar with YCS. I know that this district is one that is built upon two districts really, so Willow Run and Ypsilanti, and that merger was something that was somewhat difficult at times, and as Celeste may be able to speak to, having been on the board at the time. What I know about Ypsilanti though, is that this community is very close, it is very connected. What I see with, while we talk about retaining teachers and bringing in educators, the ones that are currently there are doing everything they possibly can. These educators live in the community, they are part of the community, and are not just there during the school day, but they're outside of the school on the weekends. You see people, we see the programming that takes place in the city, whether it's like jazz in the park, or going down to other different events that are happening, people are invested, Park Ridge happened, and I saw so many different people I knew in that space. So again, it's about this community, we are our brother's keeper, right? And in our district, what I see is that families are connected, there's cousins, there's friends, there's all these nephews and aunts and uncles, and so the problem, or the issue is, the reason why YCS is unique and special is that we are a community, we are connected, and we each care about each other. And so when you continue to nurture those relationships, when you continue to bring people into the district who have an investment in the district, you see them work, they work harder, they work to, because they not only are worried about their education, but they're worried about those students as community members, they're worried about them as a whole child, they're worried about them because they're, have some relationship or connection to them. And so again, when you do that work, when you have our community, that's what makes YCS really special.
Thank you. Celeste?
Yes, I would probably start by saying YCS is resilient. I would also say, having, I'm proud to live in this community, I have lived in this community for years, I'm not originally from here, but I believe in Ypsilanti, I believe in YCS, my children went through this district, my tax base is here, so I want to make sure I support a school district, right? So the school district is important, we know that the health of a district is intrinsically connected to the health of a community, and I need to do my part to make sure that that district is healthy. I'm speaking from firsthand experience, having three of my children who are now college students, all at the University of Michigan, who had excellent educators who they encountered throughout their educational journey in Ypsilanti Community Schools. So I'm always someone who's going to speak life over the district because I'm in the schools, my children went through the schools, I understand what is happening on the ground in real time in our district. And so I reject notions that try to disparage or talk down about our district, I invite people to come and see what's happening and the amazing work that our educators are doing every single day. We are risk takers, we're barrier breakers, and we're change makers in Ypsilanti, and that's what makes us special. When we were, many people probably counted Ypsilanti Community Schools out after the merger, they didn't think we were going to succeed, and we have exceeded, far exceeded expectations in Ypsilanti Community Schools. So anytime I have the opportunity to tell someone about the good work that we're doing in this district, I do that, because this is my community, this is my school district, and I fight and advocate for our kids because it matters, and the words that we use to describe who we are, where we live, in our community, in our district, also matters. We want our school district to thrive, so we have to speak life over what that means, and we have to show up, and we have to support the students in our district and this community.
Thank you. Ali?
My favorite thing about living in Ypsilanti and being, and hopefully being part of YCS is the diversity. I think that that is ultimately just the wonderful part, the rich part of living in Ypsilanti. Another thing, it's rich, rich history. That is something that I feel that we have to bring a greater focus to. This district was given a bad rep, and it was given that bad rep based upon, it was race-based. It was based upon the population of African Americans that were living, excuse me, black people that were living in Ypsilanti. And that is something that is a setup, whiteness is set up to make sure of that they stay where they are and they become a lesser than. That's what, one thing that I have found by working with this district or working with it, except for more observing it, is that exactly what Dr. Hawkins said, resilience, being put into a debt by taking another district on, and then having to try to get beyond that to be able to help your own is just not right. Is that race-based? Absolutely it is, absolutely it is. And that's one thing that I think that, that the focus on is to make sure that the 50% of the black student population gets an opportunity, right? Gets an opportunity to navigate through the system of whiteness to succeed. It's got to happen, that's the only way that this country is going to move on, is once we take on the aspect of our, of our, of our sins, of slavery and blackness, once we get that, we'll see that moving forward, and I believe this is a great opportunity in this district to see that happen.
Thank you. And now it's time for our closing statements, and we will begin with Dawn, and just a reminder, you have 90 seconds.
Again, I want to thank everyone, thank the audience for being here, and thank you, Taryn, as well as the League of Women Voters and the Ypsilanti District Library. I am someone who is deeply invested in young people. My goals are to make sure that people feel safe and enthusiastic about being in schools. My work has been devoted to social justice and equity, and so when I think about Ypsilanti schools, I want to make sure this is a place for all students. Students can feel safe being who they are, they're getting education that reflects who they are, which means that we need a culturally responsive education, we need to have young people see themselves, not only, we need to have them see themselves in their books, their curriculum, their educators, and they also need to feel like they can be fully themselves. And I think that also refer, is part of the sexual health education as well. Being able to support and have a space where students, all-inclusive, students are included and they feel safe, whether it is their, based on their race, their ability, or their gender and sexuality, all of these students seem to be, feel home in Ypsilanti schools. And so that is what I'm here for, and that is why I want to be part of this school board.
Thank you, and now for your closing statement, Celeste.
Yes, I would just also want to say thank you again to the Ypsilanti District Library, to the League of Women Voters, and especially to all of you who sat through not one, but two forums this evening, that's a lot. I just want to say that, you know, I've been on the board, as I mentioned earlier, since 2012, and I chose to run again because I am really deeply passionate about educational equity and excellence in our schools. I am committed to the community of Ypsilanti more broadly, and the school district specifically. I understand that in order for us to have a thriving and a healthy school district, we also have to have a thriving and healthy community, and the two are intrinsically linked. If reelected as a school board member, I will continue focusing on academic achievement, attracting, hiring, and retaining excellent teachers, increasing educational options for our students through our IB programs, STEM education, improving attendance rates, student supports, engaging student voice, and reducing rates of discipline that disproportionately impacts students of color. I am firmly grounded in my purpose as a school board member, and my vision remains clear. My service on the board is to positively impact the lives of students academically, socially, and emotionally, to serve this great community, to be good stewards of the district's resources, retain, retain and attract the most talented staff, set and adopt policies, and hire and evaluate the superintendent.
Thank you. Ali, maybe you have your closing statement.
What I bring is experience. I have 40-plus years in public education. As I said, I have experienced K through 12. In my administrative aspect, I worked on building and district equity teams. I believe that the achievement cap can be narrowed, I also believe that we can stop the pipeline of school to prison. And again, with a 50% population, black population of the student body, that we have to make changes in terms of how we discipline, how we teach, and how they learn, and make it, that, and again, one thing that I want to come to that I thought of earlier was about retaining staff that are of color. It's really important for students to see people, they look like succeed, that's how that gets taken care of. So ultimately, that's got to be in place, they've got to be able to see that, and they also have to have that window, that window to be able to look out there and see that there is opportunity for them. And I believe that what I've seen, and again, like, I'm not going to come in and change anything, I'm going to come in and support what this Board of Education has already established, I've witnessed it, I've witnessed them work as a team, I've witnessed them collaborate, and all, all with the focus of what's best for teaching and learning.
Thank you. And finally, your closing statement, Talisha?
Thank you to everyone here today, League of Women Voters and the Ypsilanti Library. As a newcomer to the district, I want to acknowledge that I have much to learn and a lot of listening to do, and I'm dedicated to building strong relationships within our community to understand its history, needs, and experiences. And if elected, I will make decisions rooted in this learning. My focus areas as a board member would be attracting and retaining talented staff, increasing student enrollment, enhancing academic achievement, and reducing rates of discipline that disproportionately affects students of color. It's important that we retain and attract skilled educators, as their role is key to maintaining high standards of education for our students. And boosting student enrollment strengthens our school and our community. Most importantly, I'm committed to ensuring that every student has an opportunity to thrive. I'm running because I believe that K-12 education is foundational, I'm passionate about fostering a love of education for all students, and ensuring that all students... and ensuring that all students receive a high-quality education as well. And I hope to have the opportunity to serve this community and amplify the voices of the community and advocate for our district. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Thank you all for participating in this valuable session. We will now have Shashana from the Ypsilanti District Library and Catherine from the League of Women Voters to provide closing comments.
Thank you so much to everyone for coming to tonight's candidate forum. Thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Ypsilanti Senior Center for making this happen with us. Thank you to everyone who worked on, promoted and engaged in this forum. Thank you to the candidates for participating. And thank you to the audience for coming to the forum. If you want to know about more events happening through the library, you can always check out the website, ipsclibrary.org. Check us out on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram and TikTok, or of course, visit us in person. We have newsletters called The Loop with all these, all the season's events. A special note is our Back on the Block Party on October 12th. Closed for more than a year after a catastrophic flood and opening with new renovations, the Downtown Library on Michigan Avenue will feature three additional study rooms in addition to the existing two, a brightened youth area and a beautiful new tech lounge. Come celebrate the reopening from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. with circus and musical performances. Learn about the history of the library and enjoy light refreshments. Generously sponsored by the Ypsilanti Downtown Development Authority.
Thank you. Thank you to the candidates for your earnest and wonderful engagement this whole evening. And thank you to Taryn for another wonderful job. This is a long evening. She started at 6:00 and answered questions and asked questions until 8:30. It's marvelous. Thank you. And I'd like to remind people that our candidate forums are available for streaming. If you go to either the IPSC library website or our website, in a few days, this forum will be up. We'll notify the candidates first. And please share this link widely, encourage others to view it. We've noticed that certainly partnering with, with the library, like, we can really spread, spread this forum much further than, you know, just those who attended or watched online tonight. And that's, I think it's just such a great way to get the word out about, you know, letting people hear what you have to say in your own words. So thank you again. And I just wanted to also mention vote411.org. It's the league's website that has also candidate information in their own words. And we have bookmarks with that information. You can go there and, and get every, everything that's on your ballot. You can find information on candidates and also about your polling places. And that also, please remember that new this year is early in-person voting, which begins on Saturday, October 26th and ends on Sunday, November 3rd. And I have all the early voting polling places if anybody has a question about that. And I'd be happy to, to share that information. And remember that all voters are eligible to cast an absentee ballot and Michigan law provides for election day registration. Whether by absentee ballot or in-person, please vote in the November 5th election. Thank you and have a good evening.